Okay, we'll call the regular city council meetings on Monday, November thirteenth, seven AM. Roll call. What would you ask me?
Mr. Nelson.
Everyone, and for.
Mr. Nelson.
And area. Invitation.
Let's pray. Yeah, we thank you for the harvest that has come in, we thank you for keeping us all safe, especially our farmers out there in the fields. We pray next year for all the hunting that has been experienced and the beauty of nature. And we pray for the coming of new things, for budget planning and making decisions that serve the community at its best. For, um, for our first year slaters that come and help us through all kinds of struggles, our city workers that continue tirelessly, uh, serving the city and our council members. For the work they do and their families that support them through it. We thank you in this season of Thanksgiving for all the bounty of harvest and we ask that in the years that actually we share with others. We also pray, pray for those who are displaced from their homes, if they find shelter that is safe. All these prayers and those still on our heads, we look to you as we do to your work, right in every way. Honor.
Thank you. Uh, please hand over the flag of allegiance. I collect the units to the flag of the United States of America. Is there a problem with this? On page two, figure out, is there a problem with this? Uh, approval of the agenda.
I'd like to propose a better.
Okay, further discussion? Although I am Mr. Nelson, I have resolved, I'm not in capacity for the details. Through the consent amendment. I want to get some more approval of this. Further discussion? Although I am Mr. Nelson, I have resolved, I'm not in capacity for the details. Uh, right one's yours, Alex.
Um, your book, um, pretty good, no, that's your company, now it gives. Very busy, I've got a little kind of. Roll call, so, uh, there are a couple of issues, so. Right now, so we're wanting to, for, uh, winter days here, uh, we're actually looking to, yeah, anyway, right now, so. Uh, got, located probably a little bit of a lot of, uh, like, stuff, really getting towards it. Okay, so, um, uh, uh, personally, uh, diagnosed as an officer. Uh, as we begin, there's a problem, control, everyone, there's, uh, that.
My understanding of that we're seeing like the Florida, the uh, the uh, the overall improvement program funding for the project. And one requirement for that is the uh, could not be formed in that which the current condition would be in the overall improvement program funding for. And what we want to add is on what's the project or yeah, because in fact, for good, we still all have to do everything about that.
And improvement doesn't force us to have to read the letter right there.
No.
Okay.
That's how you run it here.
Right. That's the only best condition possible. We've had a toss of the rain, so we don't have to do much of this.
You have this also, um.
Um, yeah, this was put through the legislature for, and I think according to me, yeah, maybe not something that's not, uh, but I would drive it. Just give me the, the past, uh, uh, fine for it, when you want it to go to it, if that means that we have to pay for it, um. The head of the mayor responded to the situation today and asked the chairman to reach out to the board chair before the mayor, with that, um, decision to come up with. How they said, um, would that be a way? What, place for that?
See, the grade law, yeah, to take it over.
What do you mean? All right, so that's what I'm trying to show other people.
Yeah, I just, like I said last month, because I was going on, you know, on some like two, I'll pay for it, so. Right. Any questions on this?
I would be willing to, uh, the elevation to twenty twenty three, that's when they, uh, for each of our twenty twenty three, we'll hold on to the. So I'm coming from NDA, but you have that having yourself less, to look at the market.
I'll say on that. Further discussion?
Hello, I am Adam.
Hi.
Mr. Nelson? I am Mr. Solars. I, most massive four zero. Okay, uh, similar to the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, petition two forty, uh, which, uh, prison project. The petition is also two hundred fifty five thousand, seven hundred forty six dollars, and that would be in cents, which is approximately twenty one thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars, that's, uh, of the change. But the dollar, that would, this application, the process, uh, which will be processed in, um, the, uh, final application, is in that month. So, that is, that, at that time, um, we will recommend that, that, uh, all of the, the gathering is completed, uh, the, uh, the, uh. I don't have any, but what they, by the way, and that, um, that, um, that.
Any questions on the petition?
Can we get this concrete here at all now?
Hey, relax.
Uh, I do notice some initial audits to provide, all make margin to approve the application number two for the twenty twenty three, three, the prison project. First level of two hundred and fifty five thousand, seven hundred forty six dollars, twenty two. Further discussion? Okay, Mr. Nelson? I am Adam. Hello, hi, I'm Mr. Nelson, four zero. Thank you, you have this, and the, I have not been involved, I always on, the, with our unit point. Design, however, did submit, and that regarding that today, um, so essentially the design has started, um, and expect there to be pillars in the future. On nearby dislocation facilities to help the console commission to be input, um, further, future designs.
Uh, anybody want to sort out, uh, my?
Which ones do you have on board yet?
I feel, um, it's not, I don't know. When you go more, okay, um, I think that we're more, that.
Are there other ones that are going to be up there to do it?
Not a lot, but, uh.
Uh, are there any one, um, who, who was part of the plan? And, uh, last couple of, uh, five is four hundred and sixty position. Contract here, visit, contract here, and we do, why it to you, it, all coming on, like we've completed this far yet, um, we are planning, um. All in the street, ready, and to a travel, um, business, yes, it's small, market is small, but still in the next month, um, heading to other, heading to. They already got, you know, clear the decision, and other, got them on the ball.
Any questions or thoughts here? Thanks for filling out the, yeah, that's the one. Oh, words? Oh, yeah, sorry, parking rack, not that, sorry.
This is, uh, uh, set of direction, uh, this meeting, uh, just, uh, we have five thirty, um, there's, uh, some, uh, revision members for. And, uh, uh, click over, uh, Danny, our colleagues, uh, we, uh, go over, pause, presentation for this, um. In the supplementary item, we then, uh, we, it's just, uh, the change in section four regarding, um, uh, participa- uh, participation events, um. I would say within the fall, every, every, and, uh, occasional. We can also, uh, uh, judging for our holiday, and, uh, the, uh, the, uh, we want to, uh, we want to have this out, you know, as an insect, maybe a little bit, uh, with, uh. Docks, and drugs, and lots of, uh. Uh, we are also advertising for our holiday, and, uh. So far, we have activated applications for the heart surgery conditions, which will be a, uh, the, uh, 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 uh.
I think we're looking for, uh, we have to get, uh.
As the third side had a, uh, a treat for privacy purposes as far as. But yeah, and, and there was, there was a land swap that when they surveyed it, there was a section of a building out there, it was on city property technically by the survey. And so they swapped land through like ten or fifteen feet on one side for.
So lands, the land swap, that's what you. I suppose church down related at all.
I think it was part of all of them when they had a re-survey that was, oh, this isn't where anybody thought.
Right, so they looked at just the lines too late. Bear for all. I'm not sure what kind of privacy issue anybody would have in non-used part. I don't know if my answer to you is that some way to future. I've literally heard your discussions on. I don't know for how long and. But with the minus with the plan that are currently being backed for that part. They may be willing to be held in consideration of privacy for the next ten plus years. They will require. And with where we're at, six years in, you have to replace them. You're talking two more months. Well, because if they last six years, you're going to.
Is the reason why it lasted longer than us because it wasn't making. That was never still, it was never nothing.
Right.
It was just put up.
So we didn't figure out when the two stocks were created and that after this.
We'll see, it's a serious question.
But I said at the beginning, two meetings ago or three meetings ago, I wasn't on council, it was a, it's a part of my chair. And listen to the person say that you're not allowed to take that kind of stuff.
Yeah, because of the contract.
What is the contract? I'd be able to see a contract.
Uh, we need to put that contract down. I don't, I think that is a other contract, I think it is a contract.
It's a, it's a vast contract. Want to call it a vast contract?
I mean, my thought, my, my thought literally is that we're paying. Wherever the head of Jerry first name was on the defense. There's nothing to do about that. By order of point in another fence at forty, fifty thousand dollars. Around a property that is not even part of all city hundreds. Next to a regional park that is being used and. What would that want to grasp makes zero sense to me, I think. It's the same thing I thought of when I went over today, we were asking, we wanted to spend money if we have a grant. Now that would have figured. But, but in my mind, if we're going to pay to replace that fence, are we going to, are we going to pay to replace the concept of getting room in my backyard? By the form wide around, that's on city property, rent and mortgage property, that wouldn't make any sense. I wouldn't come in even as a, as a citizen of the city and ask for that.
The fence was put up after the surveying, um, the city unit.
Yeah.
That we had, so the back property, the left property. Um, it was graded in Greaseville, so therefore the fact that what is this, um, problem. Today, the original tax vote would remain in the law or test. So the fence was put up, the grading was not fixed, that's when we now officially now. More like he said, when I have a fence, I felt that everything, the rest of the fence was not maintained. It wasn't on the proper fence that was supposed to be put up. As Curry said, it was two couple of groups that had been different prevented. And the grading, if they were to fix the grading at that time, the fence didn't put up and anything the fence would be in a different way then.
Parts of we graded differently and don't put up the fence because the fence doesn't hold soil. We don't have those issues either.
Of course, I'm correct in that sense, at the time.
I mean, currently, currently, the way it came across several people, one of them officially called us.
Probably, I would agree with that.
So I don't see.
Very quickly, I ended up on one.
Right.
You can't keep someone else back thirty months. The problem that was government's.
Well, not.
I think, I think going on there and say, hey, we have this fifty thousand water. And that's, you know, that's. How did we, 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 we discussed that, how much time, money, on this whole project? We need to, there needs to be a revolution.
But the problem also gets that the property owner of this area had asked. Having that, having that conflict, having that, we're thinking it, to all these people together, go look at it, observe it. See it, everybody come together, and that hasn't happened. I know, I mean, I've been out there multiple times, I could be found there, I didn't hear that at all. Yeah, but you know, you, you have to, you have to take our personal stuff out of it and just come to a.
Personal quality, it's, it's clearly was quite flat at, there's nothing personal about it.
Right, well, have you done all this, it looks bad?
I'd give the words from learning years.
Well, you can, but I mean, if you can't really look, you have to see what is coming out of there.
All, all I know is that we have come through this, at least half a dozen to a dozen thousand five hundred strong quality. And everything that we have done to try to remedy the situation has circle back and become a bigger issue from that property. There has been no, no give and take from one side. We have made plenty of options available, it's trying to turn into this. But it's just never good enough, wouldn't be anything good enough.
Well, I, I can't answer that question, but I know even last year, when I was asked to put the winter season in, you know, we had all of that done, that didn't get done.
The season didn't get done.
It, it didn't properly get done because they were supposed to lay some item, something about all of that stuff. They're supposed to lay it from that.
That's their burden versus our burden, I mean, she had no problem with it, or the person, property owner had no problem with it, they exceeded. The way that's exceeded because they wanted to do it too late this season, so she located it to be done in the spring. And now she's saying that was done right, once again, it's supposed to show you that this property owner is never happy. It will, she will never be happy, property owner will never be happy. And, uh, and I know this very offensive beyond put money into, I agree with that, I don't want to spend a dime into that fence. Uh, so it's either tear it down or replace it with a fifty thousand dollar fence or just tear it down. That's my opinion. Um, it is the offense permit, if she says it's a contract, then, or property owners say it's a contract, then. It's like you put a fence in your yard and you get your neighbor's signature on it. But if you want to take it down, you should take it down.
Right.
This is, it's the same thing. If they feel it's, there's legalities that need to take action, I guess. Then they would go after the legality, but to me, that is a fact comment. I don't know what a permanent is considered a legal binding contract, it's just a permit. I could be wrong without a lawyer, but.
I mean, just to, just to touch base with the personal feelings, it really might say, it has nothing to do with personal feelings. I have, literally lived here four years, I have no personal feelings for the property owner or the other, you don't know a lot of the history. If you look at it just from an outsider's perspective. Why are we waiting city funds that comes from city taxpayers, even things that are not a city issue? And I can't, I can't be good faith, I would never do anything like that. It makes no sense, I mean, I want to be fair, but it's kind of like a person that wanted their water bill paid. What kind of precedence are you concerned, concerned by paying for some expense? Couldn't pay that person's water bill because they had this construction done. How can I pay this somebody's stuff? I just think that.
What do you recommend?
Are you looking for an option?
I think, no, that's, I mean, I mean, what is your.
I recommend that. Or leave it in place and go to court. If you don't move, get a final, the thing that brought me over the edge per se, if you get a final resolution on this, whether it's in our favor or the property owner's favor. Was during the open meeting while the mayor's trying to have a discussion. Well, not the property owner, but the other person said, we will not agree.
Well.
We will not agree and sign a agreement. I don't know who owns the property. I've been told that the person I believe and have had a false experience with is not the property owner. Of course, in the state, we didn't raise the property owner, uh. Association marriage. But in my mind, I mean, I would put our time into it until we're told one way or the other, it comes to be a final resolution. Looking at it for the next ten, twenty years or like, I don't know, whoever lives there, it makes no sense in the city. So yes, that would be, overall. My suggestion would be either. Since that is more important.
That's all this, that's on city property. Is that okay? The entire fence is on city property.
Uh.
It is a cross, what was it, five?
The north side is almost six feet off the line, and then what I say is, it goes on the line or on our property.
And the northern end is about eight, seven and a half, it's more than a couple of lines. Um, the west is probably mine, which generally is forty-five feet, fifty, forty-five.
So here was a meeting that was supposed to happen out there. And the, the property owners, um, didn't want me out there, didn't want me to come out, didn't want, don't remember, so. Say the city hasn't tried? Retrived. Well, we should have been able to know now that the north fence is, uh, six and a half, seven feet off the line.
Didn't you have anything to build up there?
Before I live on it, I'd take it. We get along with that. I can speak for being on, uh, Parked Rock, the one building we had pulled out at double price in three years. I didn't want to spend eight hundred fifty thousand dollars for a building.
So there's not going to be a structure up there, there's not going to be any large activity up there. What is the plan for? Well, the fence for the, as Justin mentioned, um, privacy, that the website is not a good more for the way that the grading was done. And it was a complete drop off and that, you know, so it really wasn't safe, and it's not realistic right now in the home. On the property owner's side.
Yes. The question is, why didn't it say?
It wasn't at the time, I thought the fence was up now. Was to protect that. That block off that bit. It's not, it's, it's real. I don't know, and then the fence was just something that, like you said, two public works. But that was, was the way that it was, like you said.
And just a reminder about, I mean, property, these three fence companies, I'm assuming six foot wide final project, that's. Often really what the property owner complains. Um, you arrange it from, let's see, here's thirty-five, thirty-six thousand to forty-eight thousand dollar. And the ten years would be your, your present that, it's going to be a non-stop. I'm sorry, it's a money thing.
People are paying us, it has to be replaced, or.
Um, but he did say a black chain link to that structure, but that would be, I'm assuming a satisfactory.
Yeah, I mean, that takes the privacy right out of it.
Right.
Well, what about satisfactory?
Um, you guys see this ball field every boat in there, I'm assuming you're going to have to put some kind of deterrent up for. People after go on that property with your type of fifteen, twenty years down the line.
I mean, I, I have a kid that plays baseball, I can tell you right now that he cleared my parents' house previously. Houses going up next to parks.
Right.
There's no fences in a lot of these parks.
I'm just saying, I mean, that's how far out of this tack, I mean.
Right.
What would be.
That's up. And when we put in, when we put in the, uh, wild grass. And it's, it was with the knowledge. It was with, it was with the knowledge that we put in, I'd say probably for five, ten years. It's probably going to be, I think, do change, you never know. It's an overall plan, put a bunch of stuff there, but it hasn't happened yet. It's not feasible to do right now.
I guess.
You see, the housing development community, that's not a farm. There's a, I don't think that farm will make them have, you know, I don't, I don't understand any of this conversation. As far as why the city is paying for it.
Uh. I guess I would like to see, because it has been a back and forth, even in the short period, kind of, I've been on top of working with the director. A very prior director that worked under, you know, deal with this. Um, it's never going to be dealt with until the city drops, well, I haven't seen, and then that's the property owners to do what they feel they need to. That's my opinion. Uh, I would rather say fifty thousand dollars on the baseball defense, let's say fifty thousand dollars on there. Again, my opinion. If there are any others that's got an early.
Oh, they can go keep to the realty, take them apart then. Like the second. Furburgh is got. I am, uh, um, in favor of moving the fence. We do, especially, you know, if two elements could be used it, you know, for, you know, the sake. They, they do a dog out there, people with dogs have, have that movement possible, and. I wouldn't want to see the fence go up, but I agree, but not from now on, I'm just doing it.
Well, that's, then, you leave it till it falls over on a section of that. Because that's what's going to happen. Right. So if you, a Korean, I think that a dog will give you a timeline, because I don't think we've done this here yet. So, that's where.
I mean, either, either way, it has to come down.
Um.
Not present agreement. Pretty much has to come down. Whether a dog or a place is.
Right. I don't think without a plan of what is going to take place. But I'll actually do it.
Does it make more sense to kind of then, to, you know, actually being played on that fence, one way or the other?
I mean, you have to, uh, slow the motion down and then have the emotion to not do anything.
I mean, that's a question, that's. If you rash to say that you, you don't make out. I mean, it makes sense that because even if you are trying to replace it, it has to come first. Like, if that's a safety issue or.
I just don't think that the client should need, uh, a man who does, uh, take down the mark.
Right.
And, uh, then you don't know what we're doing after that, whether it's grave, leaving alone, whether it's grave and, and putting some back up. You know, whether it's getting trees on it or somewhere and treating that tree.
That's what the logic has been, is, you know, um, this is what they make without actually putting out a little bit of contracts, it's. Come, want to either come to, it's pushing out everything.
I, um, I agree with you, where's, coming along, ten years on this thing, and. It's been the only right and hustle that always been, homework comes to us, it's a problem, we're replacing the problem. Another, another shoe pops off, or that would be good. The reason, but whether that's the front fence and leave it alone and never do another thing out there.
Well, as engineer said, it's not ready to lose you down there, so that we just going to break, and stop, maybe, the other go out. I mean, I'm just putting all the time on it, I know it's not just done, and then what, bring it next year, and.
I'm calling for, we need to plan it with the homework.
Right, I think that's what you brought that up. So. Well, again, if people offered recently and rip down the fence, and say, well, maybe next year we're going to come down and pay the whole use of the grading. I think you had as much as, as kind of back and forth, but you still didn't have a conversation with the property owner.
There, there was that conversation.
Well, you need to say, you go, right, the company's right and correct, if you don't fence, we'll do grading, and then it's up to you. If that's your decision, at least you kind of give them the opportunity. To, you know, be, to, in the know.
So, you know, there was a possibility, uh, never willing to leave out her, her, and she denied it. She said, I don't know, she denied it even from out there. She got away to go out there, why don't they take just, what were the responsible? Huh?
No, it's just me and Jared that belong there.
Right.
Here's the, here's the other thing, both reading. Now we're holding up another game.
You can't just go property, somebody's property hacked up with no fence, but.
That, that part I understand, but as I also understand, property is on city property. For the, it's on city property, it's one of the hacking up their property at all.
Where, he would be. Where the grading comes in is the, uh. Comment, length of that, their land is washed away because the cities probably did not love that.
Well, I've got no problems with that, the city property. But, how much you want, uh, this, another, you know, this, this, part of the number, you're reading a lot now. That happens to the property.
It's in, don't look at it, uh, put it in the government over there?
Yep, I mean, that could be the, sure, it's solid, if they put up very expensive powder gaming walls on the entire property. Furburgh is got. Um, I'm watching to get, um, um, reach on, going to have, you know, first. Hold on, um, is that?
Yeah.
Mr. Nelson? No, Mr. Somar, Melchon Mills, um, zero four. So, could I get some kind of idea of you guys? What you want, what to do as far as maintenance on a fence, if you're not tearing it down, what do you need to say about the rest that's going? And I just, I'm on the directions, that's all. So, that is, uh, what should I come up to? I didn't, for sure not to get whatever it is done this year, and. I don't think it should necessarily be a priority for that, you know, ordering of this order, drinking plant stuff. And often you've got some paper and money. So now we're like, we're going to talk. I just, that's my thought, that it's not, at, at this point, it's not a hazard to anybody to buy it, it's not falling over. So regardless of how bad it looks, the minimum number of people that we will see it. You know, is it a priority that we need to make to do with the fifty thousand dollars or, that's just defense, we're not talking grading for, who knows, maybe another ten?
Well, so, you have to, we have to come with the proof, because I know that property owner, that property stand, presented a tree. That needs to be removed, but they can't remove trees because of fence. So some resolution needs to come, because they got dead trees now, and because the fence is not there.
Yeah, and the conversation was, that left, I've been working all week day, I'm going to fund it, nobody be taking two panels without making a drop tree. That was the conversation, I heard nothing.
Yeah, because they're waiting to see what the resolution is here.
So could we just, I also, the post?
Sure, good. Because let's be real, holding the post is what's going to, what's going to take the most of the time. Yeah, I mean. Whatever, whatever you guys decide, it's what we'll do.
We're worried about lighting and everything else, right, that's really the why we don't want to tear it down right now.
Now, if you look at, the, the, apparently you have a loose out there. Some panel or loose, Ricky, that's what we want to call it, is that word here. So one of that south, that town's a couple of loose from the fence post. Stayed right in there, uh. You get how much money, how much money, what can I have for?
No, no, no. All right, no more. I would say, if there's any, if there's any hazard, it doesn't lose her Ricky, it should come down. Okay, maybe we don't take out the post, but if, if there's a safety hazard, it's a safety. That's my.
I didn't need to take down the tree about, I'm looking at that too, but, you know, what they do when they kind of, I'll pass on it. But. We had a personal experience, yeah. So the other question is, let's say we did spend fifty thousand on the white model fence, would we have to take the bedrover, the bedrover there here?
Well, it's, it's.
Yeah, because this is what this is about, for the, for each year.
I'll tell you, now, I'm going to fifty thousand dollars.
Well, I'm just saying, again, all the company would be a professional pre-service available, take those down so that it's right. But those panels are able to be removed, you've seen it, and without the proceeding, or with, uh, in the spring, if there's. Property owner approved, how much time do we need to do that? That's probably, probably that too, like, I wonder, it's almost kind of, it takes every panel out there, every full time, going again. We could probably find a pro guy that are going to get down the table. Two days, you. But if you're talking, it's, it's just primitive stuff, there should only be a couple of panels, and, and, but I think that that's just. A, a small tip of the iceberg of this conversation.
Right.
What, what is the plan going forward? That's correct, and if. And I know that's not a question to you on this. Right, and if you leave the fence up, it's only going to get worse, and worse, and worse, and let's start following. So maybe your, what is your, is the suggestion, if us, if the panel falls off, then we just tear it all down. Or whatever you guys decide, but.
I mean, where are we putting all the trees that the developer asked to put in, or replacing the boards, and, right down?
Yeah, I think we choose, I, if it's.
They went through this column, but I still thought there was a pretty. They went through this column, but I still thought there was a pretty significant amount of.
Um. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, they'll need to order around their own property, whether that was better or, um. The change we already have, that we're all, can't, um, do.
I, I would agree with that, because, you know, on one side, the property must have a natural tree there, and a fence, but it was, what, yeah, I don't know.
I'll make a motion then to, to update this again in April. So, let's go, um. To potentially remove the fence, but also at that time, if it was a grading. To make it, you know, safe for, whether it's people that are apart, or the property owners. I'm hoping to take on some of that.
I'll send that, further discussion.
What's the motion, if you could take over the may?
I would, oh, my, I, I can't do anything with it. But my, I don't, I don't, it's not a, possibly, well, it's, I don't know.
You probably have to, you start doing that, you know, it's clear.
I don't. I don't think the guy that bought them a winner, they just know and tear down fence, so a panel, I would, I would want them to be that, I guess.
Now, what I would want also to be there here, uh, with. I would, 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 I would. I have a problem, we. But I also, I, I have a bigger problem, but. What if you don't afford? Unfortunately, it's a, it's a, it's a, aside, one way or the other.
Further discussion. Mr. Solar.
Hi.
All of mine is out, Mr. Nelson. Right, more than passes four zero to the table name. Uh, peasants, bridge, green project.
There is also, uh, this part, I bring to your attention, we do have two, uh, the property owners' tasks are done, um, to, um, agree to this project and then we can pay for it, um, they have both time, they have to deliver on it, and, and, and. There's the one property owner that is not high, and maybe kind of like a deadline put down to that, uh, because definitely you can look through the government's plan. For the property owners, that's why you made it, and what's planned for, so.
What, um, do we know what the holdup is, why do we have time here?
I don't, I have, we've got, we've got a couple of different times now, hey, but I've not been talking yet, and so, things don't do it, you want to report with us, yes, but you want to report with us, you say. But that, we don't, we don't, we haven't, we haven't, so, but, um.
Is that the first one?
Uh, this is okay.
So, you have a feeling this is late, you're saying?
I would make a motion to set the ten days for residents to opt into, fence with range project to January two, twenty twenty-four, and new business.
Further discussion. All of mine is out.
Hi.
Mr. Solars, and Mr. Nelson, right, more than passes four zero. Uh, new business, computer equipment policy.
There is also, we have, we have, we have, we have, uh, new coffee, there are twenty-seven, we can, I have, some burgers, the coffee's, uh, 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 we have, uh, we have, uh, uh, I have, there's, uh, there's, uh, there's, uh, that's, you know, I mean, uh, I don't know.
Why was that part of this court?
This is not, I, I thought it was not, I need to mention it, it's been a year.
You don't have to, they, they. Yeah, and I, I looked this over, um, I believe you guys from the, the league, right? Um, I looked it over, and I thought it was good, and, and I had a good, uh, kind of protected city, and some of that stuff, and. You know, use your personal stuff off it, basically, what it says, so, and, 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 uh. Ask for illegal activities, bit listed.
So, um, I think you'll put, uh, policy, yeah, in the top.
I mean, welcome to, for the, uh, computer implement policy, ever, concept, further discussion. Mr. Solars, hi, Mr. Nelson, hi, Mr. Dado.
Hi.
All of mine, more than passes four zero. Uh, no, memorial, what's, upcoming meetings, EDA Tuesday, November twenty-first, um, twelve p.m., Montrose City Mall, example. Um, State Council Special Meeting, December fourth, by thirty p.m., City Hall Conference Room. Park and Rec, December fifth, by thirty p.m., Montrose City Hall Conference Room. Next regular City Council meeting, here December eleventh, at seven p.m., that'll also be through the conversation. And planning is on, the next meeting will be Wednesday, December thirteenth, seven p.m., here at the, um. Announcements, recognition, your announcements. Some of the, shout out, Michael Summerhill, for this, uh, time on, quite.
Uh, I wanna, recognize celebrating Montrose for the big one that they used to have this weekend, um, September, and then, um, several early new coffee, so, chair the whole family. Uh, I didn't realize exactly how much they should link back to, with the communities, for different, partnerships right now. So, in twenty twenty-two, like, um, they're going in twenty-six thousand, hundred sixty-six dollars and seventy-one cents, um, to different, um, kind of, partnerships. I didn't realize either that they gave eighteen hundred and thirty-five dollars for that. It's what last time? What about last?
I remember part of it was good, since that.
No, that's separate, that's twenty twenty. And then, twenty twenty-three, so far, we're gonna, not just, uh, I don't know, what, two thousand? But twenty-five hundred, I mean, one percent, one percent, so, what is this, this month, eighteen thirty-five? So, I don't know. So, yeah, um.
Let's go, we can ask.
Well, and I didn't realize that this, like, last month, they have the tail, ninety-five, I don't know what she, 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 she.
But actually, yeah, I'm glad you got that, I'm glad someone did that, um. I did have a conversation, somebody, because it did not, don't need to, Buffalo, you know, Montrose. At last, um, there's somebody in town, looking for, um, some, you know, um, for.
You know, I talked to Stritch, you know, nothing, and you know, it's, you know.
And we, we're, 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 uh. Yeah, you're right. But with Montreal being part of Buffalo, you know, Montreal. Yeah, this, what's the reason?
Does he, or does?
Yes, the city ordinance said that that has to be, it's gonna say that, 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 to Montreal. Uh, yes.